Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Constitution, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as for all.
All right, this meeting is being recorded. Melanie, are there any additions or deletions?
I have one addition of the AOC dues. Pretty straightforward. And then there's a potential addition, if you guys feel comfortable, that I didn't put on here for a lighting plan and resolution 2023-03. Ms. Horstfeld will present those later today at 10:30.
At 10:30. All right, perfect. All right. First order of business, as it's on the agenda as a timed item, service pin for David Berman to commemorate 10 years. David is not with us today. Commissioner Albertson, would you like to say a few words?
Congratulations, Dave.
Where did 10 years go?
I don't know.
It's by far.
Dave's been really good to work with, and I especially appreciated getting to know him during my last four years. And yeah, looking forward to a few more. When Dave gets back from wherever he's at, he's probably working out the landfill today. So we'll definitely make sure he gets up in and give him some praise. So moving on, because Stacy is with us today, and I know she probably has other things that she wants to do rather than sit here with us, we'll move down to ordinance 52 amendments.
Amy got her notarista, and the county paid for it. It's a service that the office provides, and almost everybody charges for the notary service now. And we don't want to charge any more than anybody else does, but we thought maybe if we charged, it might keep some of the frivolous stuff from coming in, and maybe we can keep it more to just documents that are being recorded, or retirement paperwork, or, you know, things like that, that people really need to have notarized. So we thought we would charge $10 per act or signature, whatever you want to call it.
Is that on your?
It's on the last item on the front of my page, notarization service. So $10 per?
Act per signature, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, but Amy's all good to go now on that?
Mm-hmm.
She's?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, do we have, we have other people that are notaries too here, right? Or not?
Mark, I can't hear ya.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We have other notaries here, or no?
We do. Most of the other notaries notarize for their departments and not necessarily for the public. And we've always had a notary in my office. I even used to be a notary, and then I got tired of the baloney, so I gave it up. But, so I think that's part of the reason why Amy decided to go ahead and get hers, because a lot of people do come in there, and sometimes they don't always bank local, because a lot of times your bank will notarize for you. But if you don't bank local, like some of my mining guys that come in, you can't get anything notarized. And Deanna still has her notary, and I know she charges $10 a signature, so. And I don't know that the banks charge. If it's one of their documents, they probably don't, but anyway.
And you haven't, but when you were a notary, you didn't charge for that service?
No.
And either did any of the other?
And when Monica was a notary, Monica always paid for her own notarista, and then she used it outside the office, too. Sometimes, you know, a bank or somebody might call a title company and need her to go to someone's house to notarize some mortgage documents or something, and she got paid to do that. And so she always just paid for her own stuff. That way she could do whatever she needed to with it. But now, we never used to charge in there, so.
All right, perfect.
I got a question. So you don't have passport stuff on here?
What is it?
Passports.
Oh, yeah.
And I was, I'm thinking about getting one. What do those cost?
For just a regular one, it's $130. And I want to say processing time is 10 to 13 weeks right now. It could be longer. If you expedite it, that's an extra $60, but you get it in about eight or nine weeks, I think it is. And then there's a $35 fee to the county, so. Yeah. They used to be $55, Mark, when I started.
Those are $130.
Yeah, so you need your birth certificate, original birth certificate, a picture.
What if you don't have your original birth certificate?
I have paperwork where you can order another one if you need to. There's a place you can go online and order them, and you can get them pretty fast, so.
In the fire, I lost all, a lot of money.
Yeah, so I've got all that stuff in there if you want to come get an application, so. Okay. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll probably act on that tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See ya.
This is our first hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Well, tomorrow's our first hearing, sorry.
Yeah, we'll have the hearing tomorrow, and then we'll have a second hearing later.
Forgot about that.
While we're on ordinance 52, was Dave Knowles coming over to discuss the fee of changes for his?
I thought he was.
I can come back to it.
He just hasn't updated his in quite a while, and the costs having his. Let's see if I have the one. So he's changing sales data to the minimum of $10, research fee from 25 to 50, research fee per hour is going to 60, manufacturer home transfer admin fee is going from 10 to 100, county address lists 35 to 50, county address list modified 50 to 75, delinquent tax list $100, and that's the only changes he's made.
Okay. If he comes in, we can ask him if he wants to comment on it more before we have a hearing tomorrow.
Is the memorial hall stuff under Dave's, or you?
What memorial hall stuff? That's part of Stacy's ordinance.
So I guess I should ask her, then. Is the memorial hall weekend use private?
Yes.
Because she added on the upper one, but not the lower. So it's all private use?
All private.
So like if we have a meeting down there, like the weed guys, they don't get charged, right?
It's a public meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to, well, go back a little bit, onto the IGA with 911 dispatch. Maybe we'll see if we can get this out of the way. At least have some discussion on it. I didn't know if you had any concerns, Commissioner Albertson. The only thing that I was able to glean from Commissioner Schulenberger was that legal counsel, and I'm also familiar with Melanie, legal counsel for both the county and this town has looked at it, and they seem to be fine with it. The sheriff seems to be fine with it. Melanie says the sheriff wasn't in yet to come and talk to us about it. And with Barry gone, he didn't seem to have any concerns. Do you have any thoughts that you'd like to pull forward?
I spoke to Mrs. Lasley today. The only, and she, she said this is just an interim agreement, incorrect, until July 1st.
Yeah, so their current director has given notice in that his last day was the 14th or 15th of last month. So she would like the sheriff to manage the program in the interim while they're working out the final IGA. And so this will still have like final responsibility within the town, because the IGA hasn't taken effect, so they need to be involved with things like hiring and firing, because ultimately they'll be the ones sued if practices aren't followed. So like, they're definitely, he'll, the sheriff will have the authority to go to the town HR department and say, this is what I want to do, I want to hire or fire, and then they'll take it from there. But they're very receptive to doing what he would like executed in the interim.
So it only goes to June 30th, and then?
But it doesn't say there, does it?
It does on page two, I believe, in the terms and termination, on the second line, that the term of this agreement commenced on the effective date and will continue thereafter until the earlier of either A, June 30th, or completion of the transfer. So if, if they were able to do the transfer before that date, then this would expire.
So I'm fine with it because of those dates, but I definitely do not want 21 and 22, or 3, or 6 in the miscellaneous in the permanent agreement.
Oh, okay.
Just to the public record.
Okay, gotcha.
And you can see why.
I understand. Yeah, that, those are not.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
I don't think any of us would want to see that in the final agreement if we were.
I just missed the, the June 30th date, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. It does have a good termination clause. It has one for starters, which is good. So.
That's new.
And also, just for public knowledge, we're not spending any county funds at this time. This is all still going through their budget.
That's a very good, good point. We can act on that tomorrow also and have further discussion, so relate if the public have questions. Thank you. Going over to weed board application, and being that I really only have one application here.
That list, instead of making each member fill out a list, President Craig Foster gave me their current member list. All of them are in favor of serving for the county weed board.
Okay, so just approving this list here in its entirety? Okay.
The one change that we need to make, though, is Keith Reed is on the Lake County Road, and he's not with the road department anymore.
Oh, really? That's right. But he, I've never even seen him at a meeting.
He, he has his applica, applicator's license, so he's going to be an individual, but he's not representing the county.
Okay, that's on the last page. Yeah, he's not representing the county.
So that would be the only one change that we'd have to make.
Would you, you just want to change his representation?
Yeah.
Because he's still doing the applications.
He's, he's got his private weed applicators, like it's him and Chris Wilson.
Yeah, so he's still technically a member.
I'm assuming so. But he's just not on the county.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't know who Kevin has as a weed person now.
That's a good question. We should follow up with him on that. Any other discussion, any points, concerns of any of the folks on this list? Dave Berman is a representative for Lake County. I know he's here on page two also, so the county does have a representative on the board along with the commissioners. Two points on the last point of page three has my name, but it doesn't have the other three, and the phone number isn't on the list in its entirety.
I'll follow up with Mr. Foster.
Okay. But I, I believe all three commissioners can be present at those meetings, and we've typically had meetings where at least two of us were there. I know Barry likes to go, so. All right, moving on. We have an application for, I'm just going to stay on the applications, because we were on the weed application, but the members that we just reviewed also included Autumn Muir, who did fill out a form, but she also checked Mark that she'd like to serve on the fair board. Any discussion about that?
I heard somebody was going to apply for the fair board, but I didn't know it was Autumn. She'd be great, but doesn't that have to go? I, I know the cap, the commissioners approve it, but shouldn't the fair board discuss it first or not?
I don't know. I've discussed it with Ms. McLean, and she was in favor of the application.
Do you, when, I've never been on the fair board. Were you voted on to the fair board by them, or?
No.
I mean, we just kind of appointed you, but you're ex officio also.
No.
No, you do have a vote. Okay.
But the, the Board of Commissioners are in charge of appointing fair board members.
Right.
Or removing them. But I would like, I have a fair board meeting tonight, and so I'd like to discuss it with them.
Sure. Yeah, we, we're not approving this today.
I don't see, I think she'd be a great person to have in there, so. Excited to have her.
Okay.
But I will talk to them tonight about it.
Yeah, absolutely. And then maybe we'll have some more discussion tomorrow before we make the final decision on it. All right, moving on, we'll cover the East Bay Road rehabilitation ratification. This has been a thorn, a little bit of a thorn in my side particularly. I don't know how other people feel about it, but I'm glad that this is finally getting closed out, being done. Do you have any?
I just briefly asked, and I'm assuming Kevin's cool with all this?
Yeah, he, he sent it over to me for signature last week, I believe it was, and I sent it, forwarded the info onto Melanie, so she had it for ratification by the board, because I signed off on the last paper, they needed it back.
So have they, have they reimbursed the county for this yet?
This is the, the final reimbursement.
Okay. Wow, that's a long time to be owed our money.
I know.
It's a Easter egg in the middle of summer, huh?
Yeah, a little bit. It, it, I mean, it's, I'm glad we're getting it, but at the same time, it's a little frustrating. Two years.
Three years.
Three years. Yeah, it was in the middle of 2020 when we were doing that work, because I think the...
That used to be such a great program before the Fed started messing with it.
Yeah, I agree. It's, there was a lot of pencil pushers that I think they got in the middle of it, and I think some contractors that were lobbying for changes to tilt the scales in their favor. And it just doesn't work for rural counties like ours, because contractors just aren't around, and they charge exorbitant amounts of money to come and.
And they won't give us the contracting certificates.
Right, our local contractors can't do it, and they're making it to where our own county guys can't even do it. And I think that was... Yeah, I'll, I digress. So we can act on this tomorrow, or we can go ahead and ratify it today?
Yep, let's go ahead.
All right.
I'll make a motion, since you're acting as chair. I'll make a motion to accept the Lake County 412-1 East Bay Road rehabilitation ratification.
All right, I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the ratification of the East Bay Road rehabilitation. Any further discussion? Anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next up is East Cascade Works Investment Board lease agreement. We made several changes to this, or at least East Cascades did, things that I didn't catch before on that last page. We had their old address still from the old agreement. They've moved to Hawthorne Avenue and Bend. And also just make sure that we were good on the dates, because they wanted to make sure that they were covered going back for the time in which we did not have an agreement in place. It still is ending June 30th.
And we still haven't found them in place?
No. Denise still will. Is she still planning to give us a update on Friday? Have you heard?
Next Friday. She's waiting on your guys' approval.
Oh.
I sent you a calendar. Please hold her. I only have one response.
I think I gave a thumbs up. I'm good.
Haven't got there yet, I apologize.
No worries. The, so yeah, this is, this is still only good till June 30th, at which point we would have to negotiate in a different, a different agreement to cover past that, but they've got to try and close this area up and show that they've got an agreement in place. They are doing really good work, and there's some, I've, I've gotten good feedback from the community, so. So far, they're still in the basement.
Are they being successful down there, or?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I think there's more people there now than there was before when KCC had it. There's clients in there.
I think it's been worth, I think the relationship with the school has been really good, too, with Dave Berman and the work crew, you know, and everything with the, with the, the kids' work program. I think she's been coordinating.
I think we have a kid in here, two of them.
Yeah.
Two, and then the one we've had for this year. Do you know one, so?
There's really good coordination there, it seems like, with Shawna, so it's been, it's been going well. So did we have this for action consideration today? No.
No, but I think they would appreciate it if we got it out as soon as possible. I don't know if you guys want to do it in a day or year.
I'm, I'm good with it, and the, the agreement that, the one, the blank one without the red line, I think you have that, so you can go ahead and get that to us for signature today if we approve it. I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to accept the East Cascades Workforce Investment Board lease agreement.
Second that motion. Is there any discussion? Anyone in favor, say aye.
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 We might have to extend their deal depending on Denise, but I'm hoping Denise moves on that quickly.
I can update you offline if you want.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, we went about four years without an agreement, a good agreement in place, so I think if we did go over the June 30th date a little bit, I think we're still okay. And they're definitely willing to work with us. All right, I think this is the last topic before our timed item at 10:30, AOC dues.
So our dues are lower than they were before?
$4,000 plus.
I thought we paid more, treasure.
No.
Yeah, we, we, we made it work. So dues for this year for us is only $12,000. Again, this is, this is the rub from the metro counties. I'll give a little bit of a liaison update within this topic because it fits. Metro counties do not like to be the, you know, the, the pot of gold that we raid from in order to cover the decreases or benefits that we give ourselves as rural counties, because we outnumber them in the vote. And so when we adopted this new fee schedule, we, we really weren't sure exactly how it was going to work out, because there's several different metrics that come into play in terms of economic growth even and everything. So our county saw a decrease along with a number of other rural counties, but the metro counties saw an increase. It's, it's going to get tight for those, the larger counties, I think, for the more metro counties. Their budgets are constrained, and they do have higher costs. They are looking at significant layoffs. Maybe it's what needs to happen, but it's not up to us as individual counties to run other counties kind of from afar. So do I think that the, the fees that they're paying are exorbitant and outside of their ability to pay? Absolutely not. I think it's a matter of prioritization for them, and they are struggling.
So for public information, can you tell us how AOC has come to these due, their due?
Structure?
Structure, yeah. Thank you, Melanie.
Oh, the current dues structure takes into account not only the economic growth, the size of the county, the population, but there, there's gaps also associated with that. We're under 10,000, so, you know, there's a lot of things that go into figuring that out. We are, we're sitting pretty good right now. And AOC actually is sitting really good. Gina's done a really good job in kind of reducing the cost to the, the organization, even with significant increases to personal services, because the, just the cost of living increases and everything for wages have gone up. Unions continue to argue that cost of living is increasing, you have to pay people what they're worth, but again, you only have so much money. And AOC is very reliant on that dues income in order to meet the end demand. I don't have the paperwork in front of me that parcels out exactly what the percentages are in that dues structure.
But it's by population mainly?
Uh, it's only one element of it. It takes a number of other things into consideration, because, again, the metro counties didn't want it to be purely on population, because they would get hammered. So we took economic growth into consideration. Lake County actually was looking at it. We thought we'd probably get hit a little bit harder than we did, because we actually had economic growth through the pandemic. Other counties did not.
Yeah, Cleveland County and us were the only ones that had that ability to grow.
Correct.
During the whole pandemic.
Right. Because, I think it was partly because we didn't shut down like other counties did, and we let people know that we were still open for business, and we, we were at least able to maintain that fairly, you know, even keel. And we, we were at least able to maintain that fairly, you know, even keel. So. I mean, this is really good news, um, I know there's been discussion about some of the, the smaller counties being willing to pay more than their actual dues. I'm not proposing that today, but. Yeah. Twelve thousand. And dues is, is a pretty good deal in comparison to past years.
Like last year, we paid like sixteen, something?
Fourteen or sixteen. We've paid as much as sixteen in the past.
Um, I have it written on there. We paid sixteen thousand four hundred sixty-two hours and five cents last year.
Okay.
Last March.
Yeah, and we also have a county that pulled out, they don't wanna pay dues this year.
Besides Jackson?
No, Jackson. Jackson is not, is not intending to pay. Washington County has chosen to pay less. They have their dues bill and they have decided that they're not only going to pay, I think, like seventy-five, eighty percent of it. Then the rest, they said they're not going to pay. Well. Okay. And we're still trying to figure out exactly what to do with that, but we're also still working with Washington County and they might come around and pay their full dues. They do want to have another look at the dues structure. And so the dues structure could be changing again. And it may result in an increase. To both ours and other rural counties. To try and find that happy medium. So.
Although, I appreciate paying less. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't pay what we did last year.
I don't know. I don't know, I understand where you're coming from. It might be a conversation that I would like to include Commissioner Schulenberger in. So that we can make that decision, that, that is definitely a decision I would like to have unanimous consent on.
Me too.
I, I comply.
But you see where I'm going?
I sure, it gives us, it gives me specifically some good. Chips to play.
And it's always leaf.
Yeah.
Always branch.
But it may also not be needed to, because I mean, like, it's, it won't fix our structural deficit in the organization. And this year, we've already fixed the deficit that we had approved when we passed the budget. The deficit for this year. We, and that was the, if you remember, that was the frustration that we were passing a budget with a deficit. But that's already been taken care of as of March. We have no deficit for this year. So.
So if you don't have to eat their, eat their words.
Well, you know, I mean, we, we took care of it, it was all done.
I knew you were. But anyways, that's something I would like to discuss with the board. Because it would give you some ammo.
Okay. And they're not, they're not pressing for this at the moment, so we can delay this till the next meeting table. Thank you. Alright. With that, no, no further business until our timed item at ten thirty. Was there anything on liaison updates that you wanted to share, Commissioner Albers?
Green cement, still moving along. Went to railroad conference, which was very informative. And. Especially on how we're still liable since we're the railroad owners. On certain things, and Dave Berman is making sure that all of those things are completed, which I believe they have been. Got fair work tonight, we're gonna be moving the arena. Hopefully by the end of this month to, up to the. Head up against the grandstand, so everybody's gonna have a better view of everything. And we're gonna have PRCA. Loading chute, bucket chutes, so we can get all the high-powered bucket stock and everything.
It'll be good.
So. I think that's about all I have right now, Commissioner.
On that subject, Kenny Weinbrenner has been doing work on the rodeo grounds up in Christmas Valley. And that's coming along really well, I think he has three more or four more gates to hang. And he is officially done with what their original plan was to get all the chutes working and the pins. He is working, I believe him and Shar Shumway are working with Jerry Evans. And if there are panels that they're not going to use, some of the older panels that are here at our grounds in Lakeview. There, we're gonna see if we can get those moved up to the north end.
My demo will get all the bucket chutes.
That's what they were thinking about, but I wanted to let Jerry and the others kind of figure out what it was that they were going to need. And if they wanted to hold anything reserved, we probably don't need a lot, but it sounded like Kenny had some great. Great ideas and sounded like they were working that out.
Cool.
And then they've got their next Play Day rodeo coming up here pretty soon, so they're gonna start doing the Play Days. And, uh. The Christmas Valley community really liked that, we had great turnout, the last couple of years have been just fantastic, we've sometimes had to go from. Early morning into the afternoons simply because it takes so long to get through all the events. But, uh, the kids really love it, the families, they, they utilize it a lot. We've had, I think they de-rocked the arena three different times now, so. I mean, it, it's, it's a good, good, solid, um. Dirty arena. And then we've also installed lights, Midstate came in, put in new lighting for the arena, so they're gonna do, they're going to be able to do night events now. The whole arena is lit up during these, and it's just, it's really fantastic.
That's cool, and that's under the parks and rec, right?
Correct, it's all under parks and rec. So, and their golf course is getting ready to open back up and get going, they have a great golf, uh, course manager. He's doing some really good work out there. Greens are looking good, it's a very narrow, um. Throwaway, but, uh. It works, and the greens are kept nice and people really enjoy it. They had, they had a ton of people out there last year for one of their events and their tournaments.
Yeah, their annual golf tournaments turned into a big deal.
Yeah, people driving in from other places just to go. They give away prizes and everything. Uh, also, Christmas Valley water is looking really good, those contractors up there have been absolutely fantastic. I don't know if I mentioned it to you last week?
I did.
Yeah, I did.
Probably did extra.
They did extra within the RFP and they hooked up two brand-new houses on the same street. There was a line on the street on holiday that they thought was there and it wasn't, it was dead. Um, and had been dead for years, and so these guys heard about it and they said, we'll go take care of that. And they, they took one of their crews, sent them up there and dug the whole steel line out of the ground, put in new line. And before the end of the day, two brand-new houses have new water lines in access. So, just little things like that and really gratefully community. I do think that we need to revisit the conversation about the building permits and septic permits in the future. I've been working with Todd, Ken, and Darwin, and we're currently conducting an audit of the building and planning department. And we've pulled, so far, as of last week on Friday, we have pulled every septic permit for the last six years. And, um, when originally people said that they could pull, you know, two hundred some odd permits and showed that this wasn't the case and we'd never done this before. Through the entire county, all we could pull was about a hundred and fifty-six permits, yeah. Yes.
I've met White on the phone about the railroad thing and about cleaning that ditch. And are you gonna be in, in there tomorrow?
Yep, well, we're gonna be in Silver Lake.
Tomorrow you're gonna be in Silver Lake.
But I'm gonna be available here at eleven o'clock.
Okay, can we give you a call back after eleven? Alright, we'll do that.
Thanks, Dave.
And also.
Might take care of that. Okay. So anyway, yes. Out of the supposed two hundred permits that they could, that they said they were going to flood the office with, showing that we've never done this before. We pulled a hundred and fifty-six septic permits, which, which was the entirety. That we have distributed into, from, in, in the last six years. And, and through all of Lake County. Only seventeen percent of those did not have a building permit associated with them, the rest all have. And out of that seventeen percent, so far, again, we're, we're still looking through this, we're still conducting the audit, we're gonna go back a full ten years. So that we can see what's been done over that timeframe. Um, s- some of those permits that didn't have building permits associated with them, some of them were campgrounds. Uh, they don't need building permits associated with them because that, they are meeting the requirements of their land use. This is only for, you know, the requirement is there for residential dwellings on residential lots or. Or conditional use permits that only approved on farm dwellings and residential homes. So. So far, the picture that I'm seeing.
It's different.
It's different than what we had been painted for us. And there's definitely, we're definitely seeing maybe some inefficiencies in the, in the department, maybe, you know. Uh, site evaluation is being taken as a building permit on occasion or something like that, and so people are signing off on it and being done because there's, you know. Maybe they didn't understand that that was only a site eval and it wasn't a building permit. But now we know and we're aware of it, and so we can kind of button that up. But it's also given us, Todd, a great, um. Example to work with. Out of that seventeen percent, even if they were approved inappropriately. You know, has septics being approved without a building permit? Now we can cross-reference those with all of Todd's work on the enforcement side, and we're seeing a very. A very interesting picture. So the idea that people are not living in campers on sites with legally approved septic systems. Isn't the case. Um, there, there's plenty of them, there's plenty of examples of that. And some of them actually, we did note, a small percentage of them actually did have building permits pulled with them at one time, and what's happening is. They'll pull a building permit, get the septic permit in conjunction, put in the septic system. And then walk away from the building permit when they exit, when they expire. And when they sell the property to the next owner, the, the cost of that building permit is just included within their sale price and they. They, they're not out of anything, they just took a five thousand dollar lot and increased it to twenty thousand dollar value. So, um. It's. It's stuff like that that we're seeing. That I think when we come back in, I'm gonna have all the departments come in and review. So, all together.
Hey there, how you doing? Have you guys met well?
Yeah. Yes, we have, we were just about to recess.
Mel, you met well, haven't you?
Is he new? I'm sorry.
No, we've been here for fifteen years.
I'm sorry.
Did you already have your meeting?
We're in it.
We're in it right now, we were actually just about to recess, but we can go back to the IGA conversation if that's what you're here for.
Yeah.
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 Yep, let's do that.
I don't know how much I can give you as, because it's not signed or approved or anything like that, it's just in the. Stages of. It's in the stages of agreement, I guess, agreement settlement. But the, the plan is, is that, uh, the county would temporarily, there's two phases of this, one is a temporary. Management supervision that would go to, uh, July one. And that's kind of a, um. Pre-designated date that the town wants the county to take it over permanently.
Yeah.
Um, and then there is the IGA, which is a temporary management and supervision of nine-one-one until that time. Uh, we went to a meeting, Commissioner Schulenberger and myself went to a meeting here last week with the town. They proposed a, um, a temporary IGA. We looked at it and had no issues with it, all we're doing is just supervising it, they're paying for all the employee costs, they're paying for. Um, the building maintenance, all the bill, billing there. My understanding is that they're going to bring that, um, dispatch up to CEGIS approval. It's not, uh, CEGIS approval right now because there's software that needs to be upgraded. That they will, uh, upgrade that and bring it up into compliance, um, and that's where we are right now.
Prior to the permanent. Change.
Prior to the permanent change, in fact, there's a number of things that they have to do before the county agrees to a permanent takeover. Um, and there's, there's a little. Disagreeing with, uh, some minor things, I mean, the county. Expect this, the town wants this, well, we're just in some negotiations right now, but. Whether the July first date is realistic, I can't say or not, because there's some, there's some significant, significant things that need to be taken care of.
Okay. I think. I think we're good with the agreement.
The temporary.
The temporary. It's got a good termination clause, uh, it's basically says it only goes till June thirtieth. Or if there's a completed transfer before that date, at which point this temporary would go away and expire. I think the concern that we had was that if it goes to a long-term agreement, there are several. Sections within this that we would have great concern over. Yeah, I believe Commissioner Albers has cited section two and six.
So. One's marked in yellow on this page and this page. On the permanent agreement, I do not want in there, and you'll understand why once you read them, but.
Yeah. I mean, it, they're mainly things that just aren't going to work for a long-term agreement, but again, this is only the temporary.
Yeah, there's like. I conveyed, there are some significant differences for the permanent.
Right.
Takeover.
I mean, just, just as an example. Within section one, I mean, it, it's a town employee to serve on the nine-one-one dispatch as dispatch director, well, at that point, it wouldn't be a town employee. So, elements like that, we would have, we're just trying to make sure that we're understanding that this was only for the temporary use.
Yes. Yes.
And, and I understand now, thanks for knowing. The temporary part, because. I wouldn't want that involvement with the town if we were running it ourselves permanently.
We're not being recorded, are we?
No, we are.
So we can talk offline about that, but.
Yeah, you guys can meet offline, but it's just, we understand this is only temporary, this is only gonna get us to the end of June. Appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this, Barry, and Barry said he had no concerns, legal counsel said they had no concerns. Both the town and the counties, so I'm good with it, I think we were just going to wait and approve this in our meeting tomorrow in Silver Lake. But, and just mainly because there's no public here today, and there will be public in Silver Lake most likely tomorrow. And we want to include them in any conversation that we have in addition. When we approve it.
One of the, um. Things that Commissioner Schulenberger and I discussed is that we need to go back to the, um, users of nine-one-one. Like we originally did in, in Paisley, and get their input too.
Yeah.
Before it becomes a permanent situation. So we, we need, you know, their input because they're users and they have to have some, some say in it, so. So we, we need, you know, their input because they're users and they have to have some, some say in it, so.
EMS and fire.
Right.
Yeah, they, they'll definitely have input for it because they always do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when we get to the permanent stage, is there software that every nine-one-one call is billed directly, before the CAD is closed, is billed directly to wherever it needs to go? Whether it be the sheriff's office, fire departments, Thomas Creek West Side, whatever it is. And then these frivolous nine-one-one calls that are repeated over and over again, is there a way we could charge that caller, like after the first time?
I would say that would be kind of difficult because they are paying nine-one-one taxes. Um, and that would be kind of a charge in twice. There's, we do have an ordinance. It's a, it's an abusive nine-one-one system which we have used. And if we get to that point and people are abusing that, we have cited them for abuse of nine-one-one.
Well, I, I just think that the billing has been a problem prior and that's one reason they're in the pickle that they're in. I just was wondering if there's a way we could fix that when we take it over.
I think they've pulled CAD records and they've gotten some pretty good numbers of use. And the, um, cooperating agencies are going to pay at least what their use is and some are even paying more than what their use is just to help support the program. So I think that's been shored up pretty well from the meetings I've sat in.
I, I think the first year, correct me if I'm wrong, Mel, is that I believe everybody's gonna pay a minimum of a thousand dollars. And then at the end of the first year, we will evaluate the calls for service in comparison to what they're paying. If it's too high, they're paying too much, then we'll reduce that and, and make it even the second year or right about square. If it's too low, then we'll raise it. And that's why I say we need to meet with them to get that coordinated with them. Because let's face it, we, we, we can no longer continue to provide free service for everybody. It, it would be nice if we could, but we just don't have the revenue.
That, that's one of my biggest concerns on taking it over. And then two question to your department is, is that I know several of your deputies are gonna be very happy that we're taking it over because just of the risks and problems that they've had with wrong addresses and wrong CADs and that sort of thing. And I just think for safety for everyone involved, it'll be a good thing.
I do too, I do too. There's, we do have some people who are being cut loose on their own that I have talked to from dispatch that aren't comfortable being on their own. And so as soon as we do take it over, they will go back with a training person to get them up to speed, to ensure they're comfortable, they're competent, to be on their own. Now, they're, when I say on their own, if you're in the dispatch center for a half hour or something by yourself, the plan that I had there always will be two dispatchers on duty at any given time. So nobody should ever be on their own, so to speak. Because if you have two nine-one-one calls, significant nine-one-one calls come in or even one that's, uh, significant, it's very difficult for that dispatch to do everything at one time. So that should alleviate the stresses and, and providing more adequate and, and accurate information to the, the deputies that respond to the calls.
You know, I think your guys and ladies need to give you a bunch of feedback too because they have a lot of concerns the way it is right now.
They do. One of the positive aspects that we have is I have encouraged the dispatchers to call our deputies that have previous dispatch experience. If they have a question, they don't know what to do. They've been doing that and it's been very beneficial to both, you know, dispatch and, and the deputies. So, we always have that resource available.
How's things going, Mr. Bean?
Busy. Trying to get, uh, keep my head above water. It's a long-term job and then the short-term job. I'm just trying to, the long-term stuff's easier to manage than the short-term. Just trying to, just all that a lot of stuff, you know, everything from paying bills to giving people guidance. So it's, but I'm enjoying it. It's a nice challenge. The dispatch stuff is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but, uh, the general understanding of it and from being here before, I understand that the issues, um, that we dealt with for Lake County for a long time, whether quality of dispatch or, um, and everything goes along with it. I share your concerns in just reading this quick overview I just read of this. And I, to be clear, this is the short-term.
Yes, yes.
That, that's why I'm okay with it because it's the short-term one.
So, if I'm reading your highlights correctly, does this still though, if we sign this document, doesn't it still obligate that because it says upon or about the effective date, uh, require us to?
Except they have a closing date on page two. Is it page two?
On the term and termination on section five, subsection five-one-one.
Okay.
Um, on the second line of that, that on the effective date will continue thereafter until the earlier of either A, June thirtieth or B, completion of the transfer.
And I'm not, I'm clear this is the proper forum to, to bring it up. Uh, in regard to, I wouldn't want, my concern obviously for us and for the county as a whole would be immediately upon signature, let's say that's May tenth or whatever, um, that we're between then and the thirtieth of June, gonna be obligated to rapid fire, appoint this director that provides a whole lot of control and things to the town. And then July first, let's say that's when the permanent agreement goes into place. Now we have a person that maybe wouldn't have been our first choice or, or something. And now we're obligated and impact people's lives and sort of that long-term unintended consequences piece.
The person that has been appointed was my suggestion.
Oh, okay. So there's a name that's been discussed.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not privy to that information, so.
But, but you understand where I was concerned and so.
And this is just a work session, so, you know, I mean, this is totally appropriate to bring that up.
Yeah. And so there's a lot of things, um, that I'd like to change when, if we take it over permanently. Uh, one is to put that director on a salary. That would save us, uh, a ton of money in overtime. But in the temporary phase, I mean, you don't want to go there. I mean, we're talking a month or two or something like that. The town's paying for all costs and, and, so it, it, it doesn't affect us financially. But when we do take it over, um, I've got two schedules worked out. That's gonna save, say theoretically, if everybody works their schedule, there will be zero overtime involved. Now, we know that's not gonna happen. There's gonna be incidents, incidents where we have overtime. But hopefully it'll keep the overtime down to a minimum.
Right, right. So just, just real quick thought, I'm, I was unaware of the thousand dollar minimum discussion the first time I, I heard that. I do know that the, uh, users from conversations in the past, they're perfectly understanding, uh, and, and they, of not wanting to take the service for free. They understand that this is going to cause something, but, and, and they want to contribute. They just want to have some certainty and some surety that the quality of service is actually going to improve. Because where it stands or where it has stood in the past, it's been very difficult for them to consider now paying for a service that has been in their mind as users fairly substandard. So to, to suddenly ask them to pay for a service, they just want to have that certainty that there's going to be some changes.
Now, the thousand dollar minimum is not a hard fast rule. It's simply a suggestion at this point.
And so that hasn't gone to the users or anything then? Okay, so the users aren't aware of that suggestion? That's why you want to go back and speak to them?
I think we kicked it around at the last meeting and there was pros and cons, you know, as, as the users, you know, some said they can't afford it. Others said, yeah, you know, it's, it sounds reasonable. But I, I, I think the proposal is gonna be, let's start with this. Let's see how this works. After the first year, we'll have a good idea of how we bill and how much we bill. So if you have two calls for service in your, your district, um, and you're paying a thousand dollars, of course, that's way too much money. So you would, you would average that out and say, okay, for the next two years or next year, you're not paying anything. And then we reimburse you as the calls for service, if that makes sense as to what I'm saying. But we'll get an idea of who are the primary users, who are the high-volume users. And of course, the high-volume users like the county, um, and EMS, um, town, they're gonna be the high-paid, um, users. But let's just say Christmas Valley Fire District.
Right.
Probably not so much. So we'll have an idea as to how much people should be paying them.
Yeah. I get where you're coming from with the discussion about the thousand dollar minimum. Where I could see that maybe getting a little convoluted is, uh, say for instance, it's a thousand dollar minimum for Christmas Valley Fire and a thousand dollar minimum for North Lake EMS, uh, which are two separate entities with their own boards and everything. And then that's a thousand dollar minimum for Silver Lake, which is one entity that covers both fire and EMS services. So technically, you know, EMS is only paying five hundred bucks minimum and a thousand, and a five hundred dollar for their fire. But they're one entity. So would you charge that at a day two thousand or, you know, for the individual service? Or would you break that out into individual calls for service, whether it be fire or EMS? And that's, I think, why they were trying to stay with utilizing those calls for service and type of calls for service.
I would say if they provide both services, it'd probably be, just be a thousand dollars.
Right, and that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking in my head.
Each district.
Well, see like EMS isn't a district. They have an ASA, um, but, uh, so if you're gonna charge the ASA this X amount, are, the fire still has to be considered also. So at that point, Silver Lake would be looking at two thousand. But the burden's only on one entity.
Right.
And in Christmas Valley, it would be broken apart. And so one pays a thousand, the other pays a thousand. So just a thought, I'm partialing to that. That might be something that you'll run into in that conversation. But again, like, you, you definitely have intent to sit down with the users and discuss that.
Yes.
No, I'm good with this. Um, we'll go ahead and approve it tomorrow, most likely. And, uh, when we get back, we'll get Barry's signature on it, most likely, and we'll be able to move forward with it.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, there's always gonna be issues, problems that we run into. But I think we've got some pretty good minds, uh, to put our heads together and solve those problems and come up with a very effective and efficient, uh, department.
Yeah.
So we're gonna continue to use the town's?
Facility?
For now.
Yeah, for now. Yeah. One of the big problems, uh, with that is, um, and Barry and I have discussed it, is that building is the town's building. It's not our building. I don't believe we should be paying anything for that building such as electricity and, and such like that because we're not buying the building. We're just supervising and managing the personnel, um, and the equipment in there. Now, we'll have to be responsible at some point to, to upgrade that and, and maintain that. But, you know, everything else, like the roof falling down, it's, it's necessary for us to provide a safe working environment. And when they got mold in, in there, I mean, that's a, a serious problem. And that's not our issue. That's the town's issue. The town needs to take care of that and take care of it right away. Because what happens, now they become our employees if it becomes permanent. They get sick. It's gonna be our, our issue when it was, the nucleus of the problem was over there in the town's building.
I understand. I think the town do wanna try and remedy that situation though, so we'll just keep the discussion going. That's good. All right?
Thank you guys.
Is there anything else to discuss? Appreciate you being here. Thank you. And, uh, appreciate all the, the work you guys have done on this so far and hopefully you'll get a chance to have more inclusion in the nine-one-one conversation. This is gonna be a big topic, especially with this budget here, so, yeah.
So tomorrow at the commissioner's meeting, do you, would you prefer us to be there? Does it make any difference?
It's at the Silver Lake Fire Hall. It's, it's entirely up to you. If you'd like to travel up there, uh, it'll be at ten o'clock. Um, I'll be up there already, um, tomorrow morning. I'm in the home time, so, uh, yeah.
I mean, it'd be great if you were up there just, uh, have people have questions.
Okay. Is Commissioner Scholmberger gonna be there?
No, he's, he's, uh, gathering.
He's a cow.
And cowboy. Cowboy in Nevada this week.
Okay.
His annual branding and gathering, so.
Yeah. Oh, you're more than welcome. We'd love to have you. And I think the community, it would be good for them to see you also.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're more, both more than welcome.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. See you guys.
Thank you.
Would you like to factor? Sure. Thank you. We betcha.
All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn, uh, excuse me, recess the meeting for twenty minutes and we'll come back in at ten thirty.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. That was interesting.